Welcome everyone to the March 14th Eugene City Council Meeting. Welcome to everyone here. It's a great view from here, by the way. And the first item up this evening is ceremonial matters, and it gives me a lot of pleasure to do this. I wanted to take a few minutes today to honor the Eugene Delta Rotary Club. You guys stand up and let everybody admire you. All right. Thank you. Now, exceptional stewardship of the Owen Rose Garden for almost two decades. Representing that organization tonight are Kevin McAndrews, Paul Pashura, Jim McCarthy, and Barry Foster, right? Okay. Would you please all come to the podium now? In 1951, George E. Owen, a former Eugene City Councilor, donated five acres with his house to the city. It was the first parcel in a series that ultimately began to create our riverfront park system and the much beloved Owen Rose Garden. The Eugene Delta Rotary has continued that legacy of giving back to the community. Over the years, they constructed their prominent gazebo and designed and built a pergola, which are memorable spots for local weddings to take place and visitors to enjoy. They also recently built a space for a new welcome sign that will help people better experience all the park has to offer. In 2014, after signing a formal adoption agreement with the City of Eugene Parks and Open Space Division, they embarked on an ambitious project to replace all the wood borders around 140 rose beds. Then they rolled up their sleeves some more and pulled out all the weeds. Wow. A partner flexible enough to assist with hands-on maintenance when that is the highest need is a tremendous partner. On behalf of our community and the travelers from far and wide who cherish the Owen Rose Garden, please accept our sincere thanks for the vision, dedication, hard work, and generosity you have so freely given. The Owen Rose Garden would not be the same without your gifts and neither would the City of Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. We brought a little something for you too, just because we made some shirts up for all our volunteers that come out. So Mayor Kirsty, we have one for you.
Photograph.
Okay. Okay. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have 27 people signed up. Phil Carrasco is first, followed by Lucy Venice.
How's everyone doing? So tonight I'm here, oh, my name's Phil Carrasco, Ward 1, but I'm also here representing the Human Rights Commission tonight. So tonight, as I said, I'm representing the City of Eugene Human Rights Commission. And for a second, I'd like for folks to take a moment to look around and see all the red shirts in solidarity for Indigenous Peoples' Day. So as an advisory body to the mayor and city council...
Excuse me, Phil, just for a second. I'm not supposed to let you clap. I take it back. You're supposed to do this. Everybody do this and take the clap away. Okay, Phil.
All right.
The Willamette Wiggle.
Yep.
So as an advisory body to the mayor and city council, one of our main responsibilities is to oppose systematic racism, and in this case specifically, the longstanding traditions and icons that the U.S. has considered honorable. These icons establish the culture of dominance over the first peoples of this land and are named in history books through sanitized versions as courageous explorers. Tonight, you will be considering the Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. This is a proactive and symbolic resolution. In other parts of the country, this type of effort deliberately replaces Columbus Day with the celebration of the first peoples of this continent. The City of Eugene does not currently, I mean, it's good to note that the City of Eugene does not currently celebrate any holidays on this day, but it is still long overdue to honor the fact that the City of Eugene was built upon the traditional homelands of the Kalapuyia peoples and recognizes the inherent sovereignty of all indigenous peoples everywhere. And that we, the City of Eugene, should honor and celebrate the values and many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has substantially shaped the character of the City of Eugene. Tonight, we prove we are a human rights city by taking this step towards the long-awaited reparations for indigenous peoples. I'm proud to go back home tonight and tell my daughters what their community did today, that a symbolic first step was taken to ensure history is told in their schools with factual accounts of our indigenous peoples' encounters with colonizers. And most importantly, for them to walk in dignity, knowing their roots are here and are of value and of pride. I want to thank all again, and most certainly the youth and the community involved in this powerful process. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Lucy Venice, no clapping, please, thank you. Okay. Lucy Venice is next, followed by Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton.
Good evening. Lucy Venice, Ward 8, in Chris Pryor's Ward. I'm here to talk about homelessness, but I want to begin by acknowledging all of the people in the room and was reminded outside when they gathered that the indigenous cultures are cultures of enough, that they live with the sense that there's enough, and that this is a cultural trait that we also can adopt when we think about the homeless in our midst. It's a human right issue and the sense that we have enough. And I applaud the council for the efforts you have made over the years to provide stopgap measures to help people in our community who are homeless, who are struggling, the Opportunity Village, the Conestoga Huts, the rest stops. It is all wonderful, and as we know, it is not enough. And there are still way too many people in our community who are suffering and sleeping out in the open in parks and under bridges and on our streets. And I am here today to ask you to explore and seriously consider the development of a series of emergency shelters. And I'm thinking about this along the lines of the Eagan, in which they would be scattered around the city, they would be smaller shelters, and they're just places to sleep, not full-blown service centers, but a model that we could follow and that would guarantee that people have a legal place to sleep. I recognize there are many barriers and challenges to doing this in terms of where those would be, how much they would cost, and who would manage those. But I think the experience that we have had as a city, as you have come up with each of these other solutions, the rest stops, the Conestoga Huts, Occupy Medical, is that the people of the City of Eugene lend a hand. Once the city opens the door to a conversation or a set of possibilities, our community steps up with their resources, with their volunteer time, their skills, with their finances. And I ask you to open that door again, open the conversation, and open the door so we as a community can step forward and begin to develop this humane and sensible solution to homelessness. Thank you.
Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton is next, followed by Lori Powell.
Good evening. Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm glad, would like to speak on three items tonight. I am on the Human Rights Commission, but I'm speaking on my own behalf this evening. First, I'd like to encourage the passage of the resolution declaring Indigenous Peoples' Day. Taking the steps to commemorate the resilience of people who, in the face of sanctioned brutality, survived and thrived, I'm glad to see that true heroes in history in the United States are being recognized. Many thanks for the endurance of the people who are here. And many thanks for speaking tonight and for paving the way in other work in environmental movement and other human rights movements. So I'm very, I'm very happy that this has happened, and I'd like to encourage the city to pass that resolution. I'd also like to encourage the city to extend the ordinance for the rest stops and Dust Adon. And please take steps to expand these pilot programs. They're finished being pilot programs. I agree with Lucy that we need indoor shelter. This is time for it. It's time to expand the outdoor shelter that we have right now, starting with designating sanctioned areas. There's been too much time that's passed. The last list of potential properties is from 2014. It needs to be updated. I was under the impression that the declaration, the resolution, that there was a crisis that we talked about in October, was sufficient directive to get that list updated. I believe it was, but apparently we might need to have the city council vote to have that list updated and to direct the office of the city manager to get on it and take care of that, because we need to know where we can have these spots. We know they work, but we need to know where. We need to get creative with the neighborhood associations and figure out where to put them. Lastly, I'd like to say that a bureaucratic response is a form of systemic oppression. We need to know, and no one in this room knows better than tribes who've spent millions of dollars protecting their treaty rights. We need to know that we can move forward in true collaboration. As a human rights commission, as community members, as volunteers who step up, let's make the collaboration happen now. Thank you.
Lori Powell is next, followed by Andrew Fisher.
My name is Lori Powell, and I live in Ward 1. As a member of 350 Eugene, I'm here tonight to encourage the city council in its oversight of Eugene's climate recovery ordinance. The urgency of implementing the ordinance cannot be overstated. Amidst the din of this presidential election season, quietly, persistently, the sinister records keep on coming. February 2016 was the warmest on record, 2015 was the warmest year on record, and 2014 the warmest year before that. We're at risk for becoming a nerd, but we can take inspiration from recent events demonstrating that change in the face of overwhelming odds can happen. Just this past Friday, March 11th, the Federal Regulatory Energy Commission denied permits for the proposed Pacific Connector Pipeline and Jordan Cove Liquid Natural Gas Projects in Southern Oregon. Over the course of several years, particularly in the last two to three years, hundreds of landowners and volunteers from across the state worked together to educate themselves and their elected officials on the negative consequences of these projects. The FERC heard and responded. It was amazing. We're overjoyed. With regard to the climate recovery ordinance, we're looking at how we can modify this model of engaged activism, working with you, our elected officials, and the city managers' offices to ensure the ordinance gets implemented, even if it's one component, one step at a time. Specifically, we're looking at organizing community groups, including neighborhood associations in each of your districts. Members of these groups will be contacting you, asking you what specific steps are needed to get the ordinance implemented and how we can help. We'll also be actively participating in the city council election vetting process, asking Mayor Oral and council candidates about their track records on climate-related issues and educating others about this information. Finally, thank you for the work that you all do. So many issues, so many things, but this issue, of course, as well as what we've heard tonight about the Indigenous Peoples' motion, which I can speak on behalf of our group, I think we all approve and support. Thank you for your attention to this critical issue of climate change. It's all connected. Thank you.
Andrew Fisher is next, followed by Jennifer Smith.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Fisher. I reside in Ward 1. I wish to draw your attention tonight to the uncertain future of a significant historic resource in our community. The downtown Eugene post office, built in 1937 and placed on the National Register in 1985, was also made a city landmark in 1988. Currently, the future of this resource is unknown. In 2013, to the alarm of some community members, the post office was listed for sale for $2.5 million, and subsequently, it was listed for a period as being available for lease. Today, it's unclear what the future holds for this venerable building. I'm here tonight to urge our city council and local leaders to take a proactive stance regarding the future of this resource. I'm here to urge our community to convene some form of direct communication with the United States Postal Service to meet the following three goals. The first, to reaffirm our community's commitment to historic resources. The second would be to better understand what are the USPS's intentions for this structure? Is it still surplus? And thirdly, to consider perhaps requesting the right of first refusal to purchase the property should it come on the market. I want to encourage everyone to imagine for a moment a place, perhaps a mix of old and new, where both visitors to the city and people who live here can take a walk through time to better understand the changes that have occurred over the decades, where the industries that have defined our region can be showcased, where the stories and traditions of indigenous peoples can be shared. Such a place might not only contain museum displays and artifacts, but also provide educational opportunities for young people and perhaps include event space. What I'm talking about is a heritage resource center, befitting the second-largest city in our great state of Oregon. Such an effort might seek the involvement and guidance of community partners and stakeholders, such as the Lane County Historical Society, the Native American Tribes, the University of Oregon Historic Preservation Program, Science Factory, Travel Lane County, and others. The good news is that some of this preliminary work has already been done. The folks at Lane County Historical Society have commissioned some architectural drawings to see what would the post office look like as a museum. I think we can all agree it's a great location. None of this can happen, however, without a clear understanding of the building's status. And reasonable people realize that such an effort will require significant planning and sufficient time to bring the resources together. The members of the HRB have begun drafting a letter to USPS. Such a letter would certainly be bolstered if it contained a motion of support from council, and I'll be following up in an email with our local leaders and with council on some ideas that we have to not only preserve and honor, but also elevate our local shared heritage. Thank you.
Jennifer Smith is next, followed by Merle Weiner.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Smith, and I own a home in Ward 2. I'm here to say that I support the South Willamette Special Area Zone. I moved into my house pregnant with my first child. Thrilled, I found a small, affordable home in a walkable neighborhood. It was one of my greatest decisions. My son and I got along fine without a car, as I was able to access shops and services on or near South Willamette by foot. But I have to say, it left a lot to be desired, and in the 10 years since, not much has changed. I long wondered why the city would allow such a promising commercial area to limp along. It's a terrible walking atmosphere, ugly, and the car-centric environment felt and feels dangerous, especially when walking with a stroller. When the city began to take action on a South Willamette concept plan, I cheered. Finally, I thought, South Willamette can realize its great potential to be a gem within Eugene. I participated in the first open houses and plan discussions, gave feedback, felt heard, and saw we were on the right track. We were on our way to a positive vision of thoughtful redevelopment that would potentially increase housing variety, possibly invite a mixed-use environment, hopefully foster a safe and welcoming pedestrian atmosphere, and dare I dream, maybe my son will someday enjoy a South Willamette with buried power lines and an active street life. We were on our way to a 20-minute neighborhood. And all of this, without expanding the urban growth boundary, a pretty sweet trade-off. South Willamette is unnecessarily unappealing. Without care, new development will be piecemeal and disjointed and will result in much the same thoughtless built environment we have now, only newer. A do-nothing approach is simply not acceptable. Please, finally, let her planners do what we've asked them to do, which is co-create the foundation for our 20-minute neighborhood. Thank you.
Mark Weiner is next, followed by Eliza Koszinski.
My name is Merle Weiner.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is Merle Weiner, and I own property in the South Willamette Special Area Zone, Ward 1. I also have a house in Ward, sorry, Ward 2, and I also have a house in Ward 1. I'm here to express my strong support for the South Willamette Special Area Zone. I appreciate the great work the city's planning department has done over the years in conceptualizing a remarkable vision for the area, soliciting public input and then turning that vision into a nuanced plan that balances various competing interests while preserving the original vision. The new zoning will permit me to build condominiums on a now-empty and often trespassed-upon and vandalized lot. My lot is surrounded by multifamily and commercial property, and building condominiums there would provide much-needed owner-occupied housing for people who do not want to live in single-family homes. Condominiums are in short supply in Eugene, and especially in the area covered by the zone. Older residents, among others, would benefit from more diverse housing. My father, at age 70, moved from his house into a condominium, and he loves it. He no longer has to mow his yard, move his trash out to the curb, or worry about being too physically isolated from neighbors to receive their help in an emergency. One day, when the DMV takes my license, or when I can't climb the stairs in my house, I want to live on my own land in a condominium in a walkable, vibrant neighborhood. I want to share that exciting possibility with others and thereby do my part to help Eugene accommodate its inevitable population growth and do it in a way that minimizes sprawl. Let me end with a word about the bigger picture. This zone will set an important precedent for how 20-minute neighborhoods unfold in other parts of the city. If the city wants to encourage early involvement by citizens around the city in their neighborhood's redevelopment, then the city council must not allow South Eugene residents who had an opportunity to participate in the process but failed to do so to now derail the process. People shouldn't be encouraged to sit back, take a wait-and-see attitude, and then raise objections after all of the work has been done. Such behavior costs the taxpayers a lot of time and money. And I think it has the unfortunate effect of perverting fear processes, undermining good substantive outcomes, and ultimately, it thwarts progress. So I urge you to support the South Willamette Special Area Zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Eliza Koszinski, followed by Tracy Jocelyn.
My name is Eliza Koszinski. I live in Ward 1. I also support the South Willamette Special Area Zone. It is important to me that my family be able to be a one-car household instead of a two-car household, and to do that is necessary to live in a walkable neighborhood. We were fortunate enough to be able to find a house in such a neighborhood, but many families in Eugene don't have that option. There is a real shortage of walkable neighborhoods in Eugene. In addition, there's a lack of option, there's a lack of option of housing types in Eugene, particularly in walkable neighborhoods. If you're looking to own something other than a single-family home, there are very few choices. I attended many of the open houses and workshops in the South Willamette Special Area Zone, and I've looked at the code very carefully. I feel like the code does an excellent job of balancing the need to make it easier to build a variety of home types in walkable neighborhoods, with ensuring that any transitions, that any changes are gradual and enhance the neighborhood character. In particular, I appreciate the improved transitions between the commercial areas and the lower-density residential homes and the new housing types, like the cottage cluster homes, that are included in the code. The design requirements help make sure that the new development is of high quality. I feel like the South Willamette Special Area Zone code helps ensure that future development in the area will contribute positively to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Jocelyn is next, followed by Zoe Spotted Eagle.
My name is Tracy Jocelyn. I live in Ward 4 in the Harlow neighborhood. NHS Rest Stop is located on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, behind Lane County Behavioral Health. We are a city-county sanctioned camp for people without houses to live. Nathan and I are co-managers. We live there. We're homeless. We are a place where people can come and gather themselves and be safe and experience community. Then these people see that they are good people and can fit into community. They're more ready for housing and clearly see the value of housing. NHS Rest Stop had a wonderful open house yesterday. We have so many warm and loving supporters. We have a beautiful group of 29 people currently at our rest stop. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to experience this endeavor. One purpose of the rest stop has been to prove that it can be done. We have proved it can be done. We really want you all to see our rest stop. Send anybody over as a model. It's jaw-droppingly simple, and it's just right there, and it's where we live, and it's really something to show off, since you've given us the opportunity. Come see and be impressed. Thank you for, in advance, for another year to show that we can easily provide people shelter to homeless people. The one thing more dear to my heart than seeing people suffering is standing in solidarity with indigenous people. I thank you in advance for making history in Eugene, March 13th, 2016, oh, 14th, March 14th, 2016, because the open house was on the 13th, right? From Columbus Day, which we here in Eugene do not celebrate, to Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's a new day.
Zoe Spotted Eagle is next, followed by Paul Wilson.
My name is Zoe Spotted Eagle. As I grew up in public school, I was always taught how amazing Christopher Columbus was, how he discovered the new world. I was told by my teachers that all of the Indians were dead. At the same time, my classmates called me Injun, redskin, and other insulting terms as they tried to tell me that I was less than them. They thought native people were extinct, but I knew for a fact that we weren't. I am a living, breathing native... I am a living, breathing Native American girl in a very racist world. Today, I stand here representing the Sioux Nation and all of the Indigenous people around the world who think they do not have a voice. We should have Indigenous Peoples' Day to say we are still here, to show our city of Eugene and the world that we are not gone and we are thriving. Today is an example of that. I believe we can change the world. Palomia, thank you.
Paul Wilson is next, followed by Sigvana Topcock.
[speaking indigene] Noa Modockni, Noa Uxikni, Noa Ward 5. [speaking indigene] Hi, how are you? My name is Paul Robert Wolf-Wilson. I reside in Ward 5. I am a citizen of the Clamath Tribe, and I'm a citizen of the Modock Tribe. I'd like to thank you for taking this time to listen to my comment. I have been a community member in Eugene for a majority of my life, living here since age 3 and living in Ward 5 since, well, it's been 16 years, attending Eugene's public schools my entire education. Through various travels as a scholar, I have experienced a great sense of pride in Eugene's progressive social nature. However, we seem to be falling a little bit behind some of our counterparts here in the Pacific Northwest. A lot of our counterparts include Seattle, Olympia, Portland, even Corvallis have changed their Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I ask that the city council take into consideration our resolution to celebrate the 2nd Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Please employ a sense of empathy in receiving this request. As a young Indigenous scholar, I struggle with explaining to my nieces, my nephews, my younger siblings, even my peers, the American disillusion of Christopher Columbus. In academia, as well as the real world, it is important to understand how counterintuitive it is for us as a community to continue a practice tradition of recognizing and glorifying a child-molesting serial rapist and murderer as a celebrated historical figure. I do recognize that Eugene doesn't celebrate Columbus Day officially, but it is a social I feel that it is important that the city council understand that our resolution stands not only to benefit the local and global community of Indigenous peoples, but it serves to put an end to a detriment you may not have taken notice to. If the council chooses a seemingly passive stance on this resolution by withholding support, it will reinforce a phenomenon where innocent, innocent microaggressions develop into ugly, bigotry ideals that ignore historical, political, and social progress alike, much evident in certain presidential campaigns. I ask that you join us in celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day in place of continuing a historical representation, misrepresentation. The children of Eugene will thank you, and the history teachers of Eugene will thank you. Thank you for taking time.
Sigvana Topcock is next, followed by Bryna Hendrick.
[speaking indigene] Good evening. My name is Sigvana Topcock. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about Indigenous Peoples' Day. Growing up in the Oregon public school system, it became very clear to me at a very young age that my identity as an Indigenous person did not have a base or was very important within the American education system. And statistically speaking, I should not be here today. I should not even exist because I was taught the natives lived only in the pages of our textbooks, and we were only spoken of in the past tense. I was taught that they once were feathers, that Howe lived in teepees, never realizing that there were 567 federally recognized tribes, each with their own unique history and culture. Columbus Day is a harsh reminder of this, and each year, each year, my teachers would explain how Columbus sailed the ocean blue and ventured forth into a new world, yet unsettled, at least by quote-unquote civilized people. We were taught to celebrate this man and his bravery, and perhaps he was brave. I suppose it took a great deal of courage to embark on his journey aided by his dreams of silver and gold, and for better or worse, he landed here in the Americas. But his behavior here set the tone for the next five centuries of the physical and cultural genocide of Indigenous peoples. I was taught to celebrate this man who saw Indigenous men as subservient heathens, who encouraged the rape of Indigenous women, who enslaved Indigenous children, and who wreaked havoc on Indigenous lands. However, in my support of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I do not mean to villainize Italian cultures or histories merely to encourage a view of history that isn't written by the conqueror and that is rewritten to reflect what actually happened in history. I seek to ensure that Native children growing up in the public school system have a space to celebrate and to recognize their identity and cultural heritage. I hope that Indigenous Peoples' Day can be a source of celebration of modern Indigenous identities, that we still exist, and can be a step towards strengthening partnerships between all citizens within the city of Eugene and across the state and the nation. This is an important opportunity to reaffirm treaties with the nine tribes of Oregon and to recognize their distinct political status as sovereign nations. And while recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day will not solve all the problems in our community or wipe away all the wrongs that have been done to Indigenous people, it does provide a step towards having that conversation and is a way to empower Indigenous children.
Thank you.
And so I would encourage you all to consider this very important resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryna Hendrick is next, followed by Moses Stone.
I am another Native American girl that grew up in the public school system of America. I'm another little girl that was very confused about the lies that were being taught in my classroom. I was confused about the stereotypes that were taught every year on Columbus Day about how a man that murdered people, my people, our people, was glorified every year, and sometimes kids even dressed up to pretend to be some race of people that died a long time ago. Well, we're not dead. We're here, we're alive, and we have a voice. And I think that it's our responsibility to educate our children with the truth and not the lies of Columbus. That's why I support Columbus Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Moses Stone is next, followed by Patty Hein.
Hello, my name is Moses Stone. I live in Springfield, Oregon. I was born and raised here. All my life, I've been taught about Christopher Columbus and how great of a man he was, and I didn't know I was Native American until I was a freshman in high school, actually. And being taught about everything that they say about Christopher Columbus, they only give a short definition, and they glorify everything he did in preparing for this, for being here. I did a little research, and I was truly, my jaw dropped when I was reading everything that he did. He enslaved so many people, he killed so many people. People would rather kill themselves and their children than be enslaved by him because he was so cruel. No one at my school knew anything about Christopher Columbus other than he was a great man, which he wasn't. They only knew what the school systems taught them. And this past week, well, this past month, kind of, I've been going around my school asking everyone I come in contact with everything they knew about Christopher Columbus, and they all told me the same thing. They all told me he discovered America, and that's why we're here today. And when I told them the truth behind everything, they were stunned. They would stand there, and they would, I had a few people actually take their phones out and look, look up everything, and they didn't believe me. They spent 20 minutes looking at it, and everyone I talked to, even history teachers, they refused to admit things about Christopher Columbus, and it makes me really sad to hear and see all of that that has happened. And going throughout the school really showed me that there are so many natives here and so many natives at Springfield High School, but none of them would speak up. They, most of them would claim a different race instead of Native American. Ever since I was told I was Native American, I embraced it, and I would really, we, from Native youth, we'd all really appreciate it if you passed Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patty Hein is next, followed by Jane Coverdale.
Good evening, Mayor Percy and councilors. I'm Patty Hein. I live in the county and consider Eugene my home. I'm also the daughter of the colonizers, and I want to lend respect to the Kalapuian's land where we are gathering this evening and honor this and encourage the adoption of the resolution before you for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm also here in capacity of the 350 Eugene chapter, and I believe what scientists are telling us about the need to drastically dial back greenhouse gas emissions. For to avoid the worst impacts of global climate change, we simply have to do that. I really appreciated the briefing that we got during your work session last time I was here, kind of climate change 101 by the physicist. It left no doubt that we are facing a looming catastrophe that calls for an all-hands-on-deck response. I think our climate recovery ordinance is just such a response, and I'm proud that we passed it 20 months ago. The Paris Climate Talks happened before the holidays, and they show that leaders can work together to solve problems. It also shows that those results fall so short of what is needed, it boggles the mind. If every country met its voluntary goals that were set at the climate talks, every country, we would only reduce what's needed by 1%. 1% of what the scientists say we need to avert the worst effects. Clearly, leaders, when pushed, can act, and when pushed, their efforts substantially often fail to achieve what they set out to do. This seems to me to be where we are with our climate recovery ordinance. We have it, but we are not sure what to do with it. What are we to do? It's time to lend a hand. It's a complicated subject. We all agree, though, that we want to leave the children a stable climate future for them, the same kind that we were born into with the beauty and the biodiversity that we need to sustain life. Really, nothing more important. And it's not going to happen without everybody working hard to make it a reality. So your citizens are going to get busy and see what we can do to pitch in to help. Thank you.
Jane Coverdale is next, followed by David Ivan Picione.
Hello, my name is Jane Coverdale. I'm a resident of Eugene in the Harlow neighborhood. I am here to speak on embracing Indigenous Peoples' Day. I find it very important, from my own experiences growing up in kindergarten, coming home with a paper headdress on and being taught what a beautiful uniting of cultures it was for natives in Columbus and pioneers, and going home to realize that that wasn't true and seeing my family so upset with a paper headdress on my head. When my little sister went to kindergarten, I worried about how her being Native would affect her in school as well, and I remember her coming home in tears one day, saying that she was outcasted from being able to play with the other kids. She was told that her skin was too dark. In middle school, I had rocks thrown at my head on a daily basis on my way to school. I was told that my hair was too long, and that I needed to wash my skin because it was too dark. I was called "prairie nigger" on a daily basis to school. I hated going to school. When I tried to bring this up to school counselors, I was told to stop whining. I was taught on a regular basis that either we didn't exist or that things were much nicer in blending of cultures than what really happened. To this day, I still meet people on a regular basis that have no idea the truth about Columbus. I don't think anyone purposely embraces the idea of a racist, a rapist, a man tried committing genocide. I'm really happy to hear from younger family members that they do not face this near as much, but I think that in reviewing all this and remembering how things are, how things have been, I think it's very important to not only not celebrate Columbus, but to embrace Indigenous people and to state as a community that we are not okay with that history and that the true history is deserving of respect. I think it would be far less likely for these things to continue or to worry about them continuing if we took a proactive approach instead of avoidance. I think it's very, very important for the community to come together and for Native people to see that the community does not accept this idea, and I thank you for hearing this today.
Thank you. David Ivan Picione is next, followed by Art Bowman.
My name is David Ivan Picione, and I want to address everybody here respectfully. As a member of the human race, I think we're all Indigenous. As Buddhists, we're taught that impermanence is a quality that permeates the entire world. This means that everything, even solid appearing materials, are impermanent and are fluid, which means that nobody really belongs anywhere. We are all flowing all around this planet. So sometimes white people end up here, Native American people end up there. It's a whole big mix. Anyway, so what I wanted to talk about was some of the gifts that the Native people of this continent have left us, and I'm referring to the sacred medicines that they've used and that they have communicated with their higher powers and with, and they have actually, as opposed to Western religions where we talk about God, they have become God, and they have seen God, and they have become one with the universe. So I think, I know tobacco is not one of these things, but I also want to throw in that in Eugene, we're really encroaching, and we're not letting the people smoke tobacco, and I think that's a problem. I think that you guys should have a little, give us a little break and let us smoke tobacco. And the word that I want to leave you with is "tio nanakato." It's, I think, Aztec or Mayan. It means flesh of the gods. It's what you become when you eat the sacred mushroom. Thank you.
Art Bowman is next, followed by Lilani Sabzalin.
Yes, first of all, Art Bowman, First Ward. First of all, I wanted to thank you for voting, agreeing to vote on the Indigenous Peoples' Day thing. I think it's a good idea, and I think it's something that the members of the First Nations would appreciate, and they haven't been treated well. I think everyone agrees to that. Another issue I'm working on, actually, there are a number of groups down working on this, the idea of getting city workers and temp workers a living wage. Now, this issue came up, we didn't hear much, and I was kind of disturbed because one of the women who's working on the issue got an email from Mayor Percy, and it wasn't quite clear what it meant. That's understandable. I'm sure you get hundreds of emails, have to send hundreds of emails a day, but it sounded like the idea of living wages for city employees and contractors wouldn't be in the purview of council but would be in the city manager, under the city manager's direction. And I find that puzzling because there are other cities that have the city manager form of government, and their council does vote on living wages. Even Corvallis has done this and passed a living wage. And so I guess I want some clarity on whether this issue is going to be voted on council. If not, why not? I mean, I definitely think you're the nine people who are elected by the voters and that there are issues that should be dealt with by elected officials and not by city staff, and this definitely seems to be one of it. If it's a problem with the charter or the interpretation of a charter, you might want to look at it again. I know there have been problems with the charter, and I understand Eugene has what's called a strong manager form of government. But on this issue and a number of others, I think council needs to maybe examine whether it needs to take more responsibility on this. it needs to take more responsibility on issues. We’re looking at a potential height, housing crisis in Eugene like Portland has with stagnant wages, spiraling costs of living and a number of issues. And whatever people think about the issues, I think it’s important that elected officials be able to vote on it. After all, we’re entering into a new era and maybe we need to look at some different ways of doing things. Thank you.
You. Excuse me for being so. And then it’s Kendria McHale.
Chaimai Leilani Sabzalian, Eugene, Oregon. My name is Leilani Sabzalian. I am a mother of two. I was born and raised in Eugene and went to Eugene Public Schools. And so thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Indigenous Peoples’ Day. As a product of Eugene Public Schools, I can say that schools were structured to produce ignorance about Indigenous peoples. There were not a space where I saw myself in the curriculum. Little has changed. My son, who is eight, has afforded much of the same opportunities or lack of opportunities. I’m also a teacher educator and the teachers that I work with currently are socially prepared to not be able to respond to Indigenous students’ needs. This is no individual mistake, this is a collective mistake. And part of the way it’s being upheld is by continuing to celebrate things like Columbus Day. I’m here to say that colonization did not end in 1492 or shortly thereafter when Columbus left. It continues today. So for the Chinook Nation, who still is not federally recognized, for the Klamath people, who still defend their waters, for the Native Hawaiians, who fiercely protect Mauna Kea, for the San Carlos Apache, who defend their sacred oak flat, these are all contemporary iterations of colonization. For my young eight-year-old child, who sits in school and is taught to glorify Columbus and to regurgitate nonsense about the Niña, the Pinta and the Santa Maria today, I consider that a contemporary iteration of colonization. As I said earlier, to continue to make these mistakes is one that we would make out of arrogance, not ignorance. We know now, I believe you all know, that Columbus was a bad man. I don’t need to say much more about that, except to continue to choose to celebrate Columbus Day is a choice to glorify genocide and to condone conquest. Instead, I would appreciate if you would stand in solidarity with the Indigenous peoples today who have spoken and testified to the importance of such a day and to the Indigenous peoples within this nation and worldwide. Standing with us does not right all the wrongs that colonization has, all the havoc that colonization has wreaked in our lives, but it is a first step, is a step toward a different sort of future founded on honesty and respect and responsibility. And it is this legacy of over 500 years of Indigenous resistance and not Columbus’s legacy that I would like my son to know about. Thank you very much.
Kendria McHale is next. Sorry. Followed by Michael Carrigan.
I’m Kendria McHale. I’m from, I believe, Ward 1. Sorry. [speaking Spanish]. Hello. My name is Kendria McHale. Sorry, I’m scared. I’m from Juneau, Alaska originally. I’ve lived here in Eugene for three and a half years. I’d ask if my mom can come, stand up with me. The past two years, I’ve gone to Chamoal Indian School. Sorry, I’m going away. And what I’ve learned there is that our culture is a beautiful thing. We should not have to sit here and glorify a man that has murdered, raped, stolen thousands of Indigenous people, that our land is, we are still here, we still live on this land. We are a thriving, thriving community of Indigenous people. Indigenous peoples will show that, to the public, that we are still here, we have not left, and it’ll show the public school systems that the books are wrong. Columbus did not discover America. We were here before he even discovered us, that we were there. Sorry. It’ll show that importance to the next generation, my generation and future generations, that it’s okay to show who we are in school. Because I know, sitting in public school today at North Eugene, I’m afraid to tell people, hi, my name’s Kendria and I’m Alaska Native. I’m afraid to tell people this because I feel that they will just call me rude things or they will do and say rude comments towards my heritage. Indigenous Peoples’ Day, without it, it would make us more of a minority than we already are to the public eye. It’ll make us invisible to many and it makes others, it makes other races seem more powerful than we are, than the people who have originated on this land. I ask you guys to vote for, stand with us on Indigenous Peoples’ Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Carrigan is next, followed by Will Doolittle.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I live in Ward 7 and I’m the Program Director of Committee Alliance of Lane County or Cal. As a human rights city, Eugene needs to walk its talk and declare the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples’ Day. It’s time for the city to act tonight and so I look forward to that vote tonight. I also want to thank the young people for their wonderful testimony this evening. Secondly, Cal strongly supports extending the sunset dates for the rest stops and the Dust to Dawn pilot programs. The rest stops have been a great success. They have been, they have been working really, really well. They’ve been improving and even saving the lives of the unhoused in our, in our community. We need more of them. We need more locations. As I’ve said before, we need rest stops in every ward in this, in this city. And the, one of the rest stops, Nunagal Health Sanctuary, is thriving at Lane County Behavioral Health. I want to thank the managers tonight, Nathan and Tracy, who I believe are still here. They’ve been doing a great, great job. But come June, NHS has to move and right now, there’s no place to move to. So we need the city to step up and help us find a location so that the 29 people who live there now will continue to have a safe place to sleep. We met with city and county staff this morning and there’s real commitment to find, find a location, to do more, but they just can’t do it. All of us have to do it. So let’s think about whether it be property belonging to the private sector or the school board or the city of Eugene. The county today said they didn’t really have any places for NHS to move to. We have a real opportunity to once again say that Eugene is a great human rights city. Thank you very much.
Will Doolittle is next, followed by Josh Scove.
My name is Will Doolittle. I live in, on Jefferson Street. I don’t know the ward number, but I thank you for considering Indigenous Peoples’ Day. It’s an important issue that we all need to face. I want to honor the people who, the Indigenous people, the elders and youth who have spoken here today. They’ve really shown leadership and I’m honored to follow their leadership tonight. This is something that we all need to face as a community, the, the truth of what not only this man, Christopher Columbus wrought on this continent and South America and the further abuses that he did, but the legacy, as it has been stated already. But it’s not only about Indigenous people that we need to fix this or face it because Indigenous people, they’re surviving and they are standing. But without us as white people, people of non-Indigenous people who are on this land, if we don’t face our own history and what we have benefited from, then we are not going to fix this. It’s just going to continue. And for myself, I’m from the Narragansett Country, Rhode Island. My family has benefited greatly from this invasion that took place. And each of us who has not been born in this country, on this soil, has something to face in regard to this and I hope that this will be a step forward in the right direction by unanimously, I hope, voting to make this Indigenous Peoples’ Day. Thank you.
You. Josh Scove is next, followed by Eric Gunderson.
Joshua Scove, Ward 1. I’m here to speak in support of the city’s official recognition of Indigenous Peoples’ Day. Thank you to the youth and elders here tonight who have spoken so powerfully. I’m here in support of you even more than in support of the city’s actions. I grew up in the South Puget Sound area of Washington State and one of my earliest memories is of a salmon bake, a fundraiser to help save the Nisqually Delta, a rare tidal wetland. The delta is where the Nisqually River flows into Puget Sound and the historic lands of the Nisqually people. The area is now a national wildlife refuge and a federally recognized Indian reservation, but it wasn’t until I was well into my childhood. I now know and appreciate that I grew up on the land and water of the Nisqually people as well as the Squawson people and others in South Puget Sound, but I’ve come to understand this only as an adult. It was not part of my cultural experience growing up in Olympia. It wasn’t taught to me in school and it wasn’t routinely acknowledged, much less celebrated, as part of our history in that community. I believe that creating a regular acknowledgement and celebration of Indigenous peoples here with Indigenous Peoples’ Day will be a powerful, symbolic and substantive step toward a better, stronger community for everyone, as well as what is just. Now, you’re accustomed to hearing me speak on issues of climate and broader issues of sustainability. Sustainability is just a simultaneous commitment to the present and future. And people tend to share that commitment when they have a sense of history and a sense of place. Indeed, Indigenous peoples have been some of the strongest, clearest voices in support of strong and immediate action on climate change. That’s no coincidence. One way that my wife and I have attempted to share that sense of history in place with our young daughters is to make sure that they know they are growing up on Kalapuia land and water and that we, as a family, honor those who came before us where we live. One hope I have for my children is that they grow up in a community where it’s not just they who know that, but that the whole community celebrates its past and its full past. I want it to be normal for kids here to know that they are on Kalapuia land and water and that the community honors that past. First, it is right and just to do so. It is what we should and must do, for all the reasons you’ve heard so eloquently this evening in ways that I can’t speak to. But I can speak to how, when it’s normal to celebrate and show reverence to those who came before, it plants the seeds in young minds that somebody will be here later too and that our actions have impacts in our lives and beyond and that we might want to get things right for those people who will be here later on. That sounds like the kind of community we all want. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Gunderson is next, followed by Mariah Long.
I’m Eric Gunderson. I live in Lane County, but I’ve worked in downtown Eugene as an architect for 43 years. As always, thanks for, for the good work the mayor and council are doing in our community and for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It’s really great to see open discussion about downtown open spaces, Keesee Square and the park blocks in particular. These opportunities point to the value of urban renewal as an instrument for the continued success of our downtown. I was part of a thoughtful master plan for the park blocks that the city developed in 2006. It’s still on the city website. It provides history and possibilities for future improvement for that important space. Some key issues that should be part of community discussion include our preconceptions about 1950s architecture and how public spaces succeed. First, I want to stand up for mid-century modern architecture. I often hear phrases like “the aging 1950s-era design,” makes me feel old. I don’t know about you, but. This negative view of our history was a common theme in discussion of our now demolished city hall. I suggest, though, that there are many valuable mid-century modern places in our downtown. They were designed, paid for and built by our community at a time when timber and rock and roll were booming. Some cities such as Atlanta, Austin, Denver have embraced 1950s-era buildings as important parts of their character. Imagine Seattle without the Space Needle. The Eugene park blocks are one of the few mid-century modern public spaces in the Northwest. There are great ways to enhance them while keeping their best features. Possibilities include recreating the Northwest quadrant of the park blocks, renewing its fountains, yes, there were originally two, not just one, weekend closures of the park streets, pedestrian crossing improvements and general renewal. We should embrace our mid-century modern past. Second, both the park blocks and Keesee Square pose the question of what makes a successful urban space. Both spaces suffer from a lack of activity along at least two of their edges. I applaud the mayor and council for considering the win-win option for Keesee Square in which we would keep both a square and have a new building. The original park blocks, if you look at old land use maps, actually had 50 commercial businesses fronting on what was then four quarter blocks. Imagine today if there were an active building in place of the butterfly parking garage, a redeveloped Lane County courthouse and revitalized development to the east and west. It’s time for park blocks that would attract families and which might be a home for farmer’s market. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariah Long is next, followed by Naomi Strausser.
My name is Mariah Lern, Ward 8, and I’m also co-director of Al-Nakba Awareness Project. ANAP focuses on Palestinian human rights in our community. And as many of you might know, we advocate the legal and moral right of return for the Palestinian refugees who were ethnically cleansed, forcibly expelled from their homes and homeland. Because human rights are for all people and because we see the intersectionality of struggles, we urge you to make the second Monday in October Indigenous Peoples’ Day. We deeply understand that in many ways, the Palestinians and our own Indigenous peoples share the same struggles, same fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Naomi Strausser is next, followed by Mary Lou De Salina, it looks like.
My name is Naomi. I’m Klinkit Kogwanton. I am a resident of Eugene. I’ve grown up here. Having grown up in the, the public school system here, you learn about, I learned about my own culture through a lens that began when Columbus sailed the ocean blue in 1492. There’s this idea that, this romantic idea that we didn’t exist until he found us, when really, we found a sociopath lost at sea. This idea that we didn’t exist and that we were wiped out is incorrect. I’m a mother of two here and I’ve been able to go into my children’s classes and to teach about our culture from our point of view, a point of view that the teachers aren’t necessarily able to. Tonight, you have the opportunity Tonight, you have the opportunity to celebrate and acknowledge the people who were here pre-contact, and to change a day that celebrates something ugly. And I really hope that this is something that you all consider, that when we are wiped out of history—from our history books, yet we're here—it's almost like we're seen as ghosts. When we have to continually fight for our identity, it's disheartening. I really hope that tonight, with my teenage son here, that you all will help change his view of the city. Gonochish. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lou De Salina?
Hello, my name is Salina, and this is Mary Lou.
Oh, there's two of you.
We are here today to speak about having an Indigenous Day in the city of Eugene. We should have an Indigenous Day to give them recognition for all their hard work and that they have done for years. They have suffered too much to not get recognition. We also think that we should have an Indigenous Day to educate our youth about how important it is to know their roots and to teach them about the hidden story behind Columbus Day. We want to learn more about our indigenous roots and our traditions and beliefs. We would love to grow up in a community where our ancestors are recognized. We will feel like our indigenous ancestors will finally have a voice that will be heard. It might not be something that will be a big change, but it's a step forwards and not backwards, a step to thrive further. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Close the public forum. And thank you all very much for coming. I know for some people it was hard to come, and I really want to honor that and appreciate that. And I want to tell you how great it is to see you all in this room. Thank you for taking the time to come speak with us. We really appreciate it. And the post office—I actually went and visited the postal service in DC about this issue, and I think I've told this story before, but basically, they said they were not planning on selling it anymore. And I said, "If you change your mind or get ready to sell it, will you give us first call?" And they said, "No." That's how the conversation went. And then it was sort of—my impression was, at least at that time, that when they decide to sell it, they're going to look for who has the most money possible and want to get the most money out of it. And then just last month, we did a revisit to see what the current situation was, and it's pretty much—I don't know if it was as rude as it was that time, but it was pretty much the same answer. And my suggestion to you and to anybody who's interested, and I hope we're all interested in preserving that wonderful place, is that I think your congressman and your senator need ammunition. And so, rather than writing the post office, I would write your senator and your congressman and say, "We need your help to hold on to this valuable piece of our property and our history for this city." And launch a—there's nothing that gets certain representatives of us more inaction than getting a lot of mail, that something really matters here. So just want to tell you, I think that—okay? All right. Any other comments? Yes? Claire?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was gonna—thank you for that story about the post office, because I was gonna say, "I'm looking forward to receiving Fisher's information about it." And I know I received a letter, because the building is in my ward, asking me to take a role. I don't know how active I could be, but I'm certainly in support. And whatever role I can play, or, you know, a letter I can sign, phone call I can make, I'm willing to be a part of supporting your efforts. I think you are correct in identifying as a historical asset that we need to acknowledge and try to preserve. And it's unfortunate that the postal service takes the attitude they do towards it. And then I just wanted to say, I was very moved and humbled by the speakers who spoke this evening to advocate on behalf of the Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. It's well past time for us as a country to acknowledge the legacy that you eloquently spoke of and to celebrate the original peoples of this land and the many gifts they and you have and continue to give this country and our community. So thank you for bringing that forward to us this evening.
Anyone else? Okay. So now we're gonna move on to a next item. Again, thank you so much. And that is action item number four, which is—
Five.
Yep. An ordinance extending the sunset date to the rest stop and dusk-to-dawn pilot programs and providing for an immediate effective date. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The current rest stop and dusk-to-dawn permitted overnight sleeping pilot programs are set to sunset on March 31st of this year. This item is for council to take action on an ordinance that would extend both programs until March 31st of 2017 and permit the city to continue operating these programs in accordance with council approval of specific sites. The program currently supports five rest stops, three of which are managed by community-supported shelters and two by Nightingale Health Sanctuary in partnership with Lane County. St. Vincent de Paul manages two dusk-to-dawn sites, one at their service station, and one car-based program that operates each night on Lane County property. Based on council comments after the public hearing, two ordinances are included for your consideration, both of which incorporate an immediate effective date. Option B also amends the dusk-to-long dawn language to include the city manager's consideration of seasonal sunset when determining the hours permitted by the program.
City manager, before I have Council President put the motion out, I wanted to ask you a question. It seems to me that maybe the use of the word "pilot" is inaccurate, that maybe they are programs, and so far they're successful programs. That does not indicate that they're permanently located in the spots they're located in. So there is something about, in a language, acknowledging that we've piloted them and they're successful, and at the same time knowing that we may not be able to keep them in the same places forever. So I just wanted to put that out there for council consideration. So you want to put the message?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Council Bill 5153, an ordinance extending the sunset dates of the rest stop and dusk-to-dawn programs as presented in version 2. And I deliberately edited out "pilot."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Poling?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, would we not have to go through the entire ordinance and anywhere where it says "pilot," have that stricken also now, the way the motion was put out?
Claire, also. Would that be a quick question?
If you wanted to remove "pilot" from the ordinance, yes, you would. My suggestion to you is let us do that the next time we bring it back to you, because it's possible that if you just said, "Delete the word 'pilot,'" anywhere it appears in the ordinance, there may be some unintended consequence, and I can't tell you that without reading it. But we certainly understand the intent of council, and the next time we bring it back, we would bring it back without that word in it.
Okay, so the way that Counselor Evans worded his motion would not cause any conflicts with the wording in the actual ordinance, then?
Correct. What Counselor Evans basically did with the motion was to tell us, "The next time we bring it back to you, do not have that word 'pilot' in it."
And then the only other thing I'd like to bring up is, I appreciate the wording in subsection 4, version 2, in determining the hours that the city manager permits persons to sleep overnight at designated sites. You know, before, we had certain times with the changing of the daylight savings time and the actual sunset changing. I think this is worded better. I'm okay with leaving the time that it ends at 7:30 a.m., no matter what time of year it is, because that way people are up and out and can go to businesses and stuff. I just want to make sure that when this gets disseminated out, that the people running the programs are aware of this and that some form of clear and understandable signage is provided so folks know that from this time to this time, we're gonna be opening up at X, and so there's no confusion.
And most likely, we will do that in two ways. One will be we'll amend the administrative rules to say, "Here's the sunset time," and then notice would go out to all of the people managing the sites to say, "Here's the amended rule," and so people would not be able to show up before this particular hour.
Thank you.
I got Counselors Zelenka and then Counselor Saret.
Yeah, I'm in support of both of the ordinances. And I was also gonna comment, I appreciate the language on the timeline. I know that was kind of a sticky issue, so I think that works for me. And then, secondly, I want to just give notice to councilors, I was gonna put forward a workshop to investigate growing other opportunity villages in every part of the city, so expect that coming soon.
Counselor Saret?
Yep, I look forward to that, Counselor Zelenka. So, city attorney, when you say, "The next time you bring this forward, it would not be designated a pilot program any longer," do you mean when the sunset date that's in there for March 31st, 2017, is approaching and we need to extend it?
Correct. So about 12 months from now.
Okay. I appreciate the mayor giving voice to that, because I've been saying it's time to stop making this a pilot. The rest stops are working. We need more. I also appreciated the public comment from Lucy Vélez about the idea of creating indoor shelters, and I know there's energy amongst some of us on the council to explore that idea as well in some form. And then, we've heard that the Nightingale Health Sanctuary site is gonna have to be relocated in June. I don't know if that's a temporary location like it was last year or a permanent one, but I think that gives more urgency to getting that updated site list that—I know at least one counselor has requested, now two counselors are requesting—the sites that the city has control over that we looked at way back in 2014. I think maybe—I don't know when Counselor Zelenka's workshop is gonna happen, but I think the council should review that list again.
Counselor Zelenka, you have something else?
Yeah, I was also gonna comment on Lucy Vélez's idea of a real shelter, and maybe we can make that an urban renewal project and have it be one of the lists. What do you think about that, Judge?
That might be acceptable.
There you go. All right. So, we're ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please indicate. 12345678, it passes. Thank you all very much. And the only other thing I would like to add to that conversation is, when it comes back with all these options we're talking about, something for you to consider is whether —take a look at our original language of where it can and cannot be, and think about what space you might be wanting to look at that you could find in every ward. Just to think about. Because then if everybody has to deal with it, everybody has to deal with it, right? That's—yes. Okay. So, next action item, a resolution declaring the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And this item is an Indigenous Peoples' resolution that would establish the second Monday of each October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day. And Eugene has the opportunity to join other West Coast cities like Seattle, Portland, and Corvallis in passing a resolution recognizing the contributions made to our community by Indigenous peoples. This concept was brought forward by community members, and on February 16th of this year, the Human Rights Commission voted unanimously in support of its passage. By passing this resolution, you will affirm that the city council commits to continue its efforts to promote the well-being and growth of Eugene's indigenous community and to encourage other businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October.
Thank you. And I'm gonna turn, before I have you put it on the table, I'm gonna turn to Counselor Pryor, who is a liaison with our Human Rights Commission.
Yes, thank you. And as your representative to the Human Rights Commission, it really is my pleasure and my privilege to bring this recommended motion to the council. They, as was mentioned, passed it unanimously. And some folks might say, "Why are we messing around with traditions? Why is this the role of the city council?" But I think every once in a while, we, as the representatives of the city, should pause and talk about what traditions we should be proud of, what traditions reflect our values, and what we, as a community, want to celebrate. And I think in this instance, it's important that our values and what we are proud of should be reflected in the things that we do. And right now, I don't think—if you do even a little bit of searching on the internet, Columbus is the person you want to be celebrating. But I do think the indigenous people of our area and our country are very much the kind of people that we are proud of, should celebrate, and do reflect the values that this community holds. And so, I highly recommend that we not only pass this, but I think it would be a really cool thing to do if we, as a city council and a city, pass this unanimously so that we could demonstrate our support for this idea.
Put it on the table?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am very pleased and proud to move to adopt Resolution 5148, declaring the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So I'm just gonna make this comment that—I think it was well over a year ago there was this city club program on this, and then I want to give a special shout-out to North Eugene High School students that I got received tons of letters from for several years over this issue. So this is like something that's been really cooking for a long time, and I think is really important to a lot of people. It has been part of people learning the real history and how to look at this with different eyes. And then my final comment is, your past, your present, and your future—you exist. Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, I wanted to thank everybody for—I want to thank the Human Rights Commission for bringing this forward and passing it unanimously, and also to all of you for coming and speaking tonight, especially to the young people who spoke so powerfully and passionately about the Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. Today, when we have a demagogue like Donald Trump espousing racism and hate and inciting violence, I think it's important for all of us to stand up and say, "That's wrong." So I, for one, stand with all of you and wholeheartedly support and celebrate this resolution.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to everyone who came and shared your story and your truth with us this evening. I have only mine to share, I suppose, when I say that a part of this makes me a little bit sad, I guess is the only way I can say it, in that there is a portion of this that has to make someone evil in order for it to be more powerful. That makes me sad. It troubles me a little bit, I guess, because there are those people in our country, there are those people among us who find some pride in their family's lineage and their family's past that associates with those who certainly have done wrong and done bad things. But I think there's enough of that to go around for all. I prefer to say that there's certainly a history of ethnocentrism that our current-day culture has to answer for, that's inappropriate, that there's an amount of education that's been misdone for a long time, that certainly would serve me better. It's actually interesting, I wish I knew more than I knew and had been taught in a different way. I don't know if you can see this, and this is an older picture I just pulled up real fast, but this is a picture of my father. I don't know if you can really see that or not, but he was born in Montana, as was his father. And my grandfather was raised for the first, we think, six years of his life on a blackfoot orphanage in Montana. And no one really knows. I think that makes me something either an eighth or a sixteenth blackfoot, but I don't know. And I wish I did. It was not celebrated in my family the way it probably should have been. And I suppose if our culture treated it differently, perhaps I would know more about myself than I know. So this is a little bit of a way for us to say, "Who we are now recognizes this, honors this, and says we should learn more than we know." So I'll support this. You bet.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. I eat in favor and none in opposition, it passes. That’s worth a clap. So I’m going to ask council—we have committee reports after this, but it seems so anticlimactic. Does anybody object to us not doing committee reports tonight?
On Wednesday?
Nope. With no objection, we’ll end the meeting. Thank you all.
Good work.